Good afternoon. I am pleased and excited to open today's conversation between the Honorable Amanda Ferriess and President Carol Mason. My name is Hanan and I am part of the ACE Program here at John Jay College. March is a Women's History Month and we are thrilled to be celebrating with the first Latina to serve as Majority Leader of the New York City Council. With Councilmember Ferriess appointment as Majority Leader, this is the first time in the history of the New York Council that all leadership positions are held by women, all of whom are women of color. Councilmember Ferriess represents New York City's 18th District, her home district, which encompasses the neighborhoods of Soundview, Runker, Soundview, Classen Point, Castle Hill, Union Fort, Harding Park, Parkchester, Westchester Square in the Bronx. Ferriess has worked to improve her home district and ensure constituents receive the services they need. In just her first two years as a council member, she delivered over $34.5 million to her community for services and improvements. Councilmember Ferriess has been a staunch advocate for women's rights issues. As the former co-chair of the Women's Caucus, Ferriess helped pass the NYC Abortion Rights Act, Menstrual Equity Package, and more. Ferriess is the first woman Bronx resident and Latinx person to serve as Chair of the Committee on Economic Development in the Council. As Chair, she has passed a citywide plan for industrial development and provided discounted ferry fares for high school students. On the criminal justice side, Ferriess was a correspondent of the recently enacted How Many Stops Act and pushed for a ban of solitary confinement in city jails. Councilmember Ferriess dedication to social justice has been evident throughout her work and her career, and I am so excited to hear her insights and about her current work. Today's conversation will be facilitated by our college president, Carol V. Mason, a legal pioneer and a voice for equality, fairness, and criminal justice reform. Before joining John Jay College, Carol Mason served as United States Assistant Attorney General and was the head of the Office of Justice Programs at the U.S. Department of Justice. President Mason oversaw an arry of criminal justice initiatives advancing community and police trust and reentry. She also served as a Deputy Associate Attorney General at the Department of Justice from 2009 to 2012, where she managed the Office of Justice Programs, the Office of Violence Against Women, and the Office of Community Oriented Policing Services. President Mason received her law degree from the University of Michigan Law School and her bachelor's from the University of North Carolina. I thank the Office of External Affairs for arranging this program and for giving me the honor to introducing this program. Please join me in welcoming the Honorable Amanda Ferriess to virtual John Jay. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Hanan, and good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having me here today to celebrate Women's History Month with you all at John Jay College. I'm delighted to speak with all of you young leaders here tonight. I'm born and raised in the Bronx, went to school in New York City for my entire educational career, so being here with all of you is already giving me an opportunity to see a lot of my young self in all of you. I think it's incredible that John Jay students have come in with this mindset that you know you want to pursue a career in public service. It speaks volumes to your character, to how much you love your city, your communities, and how much of a leader all of you are already. Loving our communities is at the core of what makes us all great public servants. I know we already heard a little bit of my bio today, but my journey into public service has an array of experiences that have helped me get here. I wanted to share a story with you all about one of my first experiences that kind of show that love for your community that I was talking about. I have a very fond memory, it was my sophomore year of high school. My mom and I were at the nail salon together on the weekend. I went to an all-girls parochial school, something that my mom dedicated a lot of her time, energy, and she'll never let me forget money into making sure that I went to this really good school. But in that sophomore year summer, she broke the news to me that she was unable to continue to afford to pay for my next year in school. Coincidentally, at that same time in that same place, we ran into one of my after-school coordinators at the salon, and unfortunately, as she was excitingly asking me about how my school years were going, we had to break the news to her that I was unable to continue on. While we were all sad and somber, knowing that I was really thriving at this school and that my teachers and my mom wanted me to continue on because they saw all the potential in me, in that moment, my teacher asked us to stay, walked out of the salon, and came back in with an envelope of half of my tuition to give to my mom. And to not only see my mom, but a teacher directly invest back in me to build me up so much as a young person with a bright future in my community, that meant a lot and really, I think, was one of the initial catapults into my academic future and where I am today. I really do think it's stories like these that we have to hold on to. You know, we are the products of the love of our community, and that true service is about giving back to those who give so much to you. And so even when this job gets difficult, because it definitely does, it's moments and stories like this that I really use and I believe we all have to use to really ground ourselves. Our communities are rooting for us every day, and more often than not, it's the women in the room who are actually looking out for one another. I never saw myself as an elected official. It really was my former boss in the New York City Council, Councilmember Elizabeth Crowley, who empowered, mentored, and basically cornered me into running for office, and I'm really, really glad that she did. I not only ran for this seat, my own seat where I was born and raised, but in between the times of my two runs for office, I made sure other women of color were also rising up as leaders in their own communities and had the ability to run for office, help women get elected to office, and take on other leadership roles. I co-founded Women of Color for Progress, where we supported and amplified candidates for local office. I worked and helped start 21and21, which is now the new majority, to get us towards that working goal of a woman majority in the New York City Council. And once I got into the New York City Council, I was able to be nominated and elected by my peers as the co-chair of the Women's Caucus. Really, every issue is a women's issue, and as co-chair, myself and Councilmember Lewis were able to pass a number of comprehensive bill packages, including Universal Childcare Package, the New York City Abortion Rights Act, the Support Survivors Package for those surviving from domestic violence, and a menstrual equity package. Now this year, I'm incredibly proud to serve as the first Latina Majority Leader in the New York City Council. I'm confident in this new position that I'll be able to deliver real tangible results for my constituents, colleagues, and all New Yorkers alike as we work to strengthen the city that we all love. I'm also honored to work with the City Council's historic, diverse, and entirely female leadership team. It's literally really amazing to have counterparts in a body with you that can talk about the same issues that we're all facing across the city and try to work on comprehensive solutions to make our city just a little bit better every day. Women's history is what happens when we pull each other up, when we leave the door open behind us, when we break that glass ceiling, and that's what we all have to keep doing no matter what or who or where we are. Women's history is a legacy of care, a legacy of service. It's about making sure your legacy is not the last. And with that, I look forward to hearing your questions, thoughts for me tonight, and really thank you, President Carol Mason, and the team at John Jay for having me here tonight and for moderating.
Thank you for sharing your wonderful, powerful story. You've had an amazing trajectory to where you are today at such a young age, and that you may not want to hear that, but one day you will look back and realize that I really was, this is really an amazing journey. So you told us that Councilwoman Crowley was your mentor, but give us a little more information about how you got to where you are today. What was your career journey to get you to the Council?
Yeah, it's actually, you know, I really never saw myself as a public-facing public servant. I was a backroom operative on campaigns. You know, I went from working local campaigns as a college student and a grad student, trying to look at data, aggregating that data, coming up with victory plans for campaigns, so much so I worked on a few that the Barack Obama reelection campaign called me. I moved out to Colorado for his 2012 reelection, helped secure Black and Latino voters coming out, and some of the down-ballot issues that were happening there, like the legalization of cannabis and other items that were on the ballot that we worked on. Colorado had specific issues where their ballots were only monolingual, and so we really needed comprehensive teams out there to fight for people to have access to vote. And so through all of that, I made my way back to New York City and ended up working at the Council. I really was just a person that was like, how do I create long-term change, generational shifts? I believed that was through policy, and so I came to work at City Hall to work for a member where I could say, here is a problem in local government, here's a law that I think needs to be repealed or amended or created. And so that was how I viewed my pathway to creating the generational shifts that I wanted to see, to change how my communities were getting benefits or resources or investments. And honestly, like I said, you know, Elizabeth really cornered me into running for office. I worked for her for about four and a half years. Year two, two and a half, she kept asking. Year three, she was a lot more deliberate and intentional with how she was asking me to consider running. I did end up saying yes in 2016, ran, raised money, lost. My 2017 campaign came in second to a 14-year incumbent as the youngest candidate. I was just 26, and it was a six-way race. I was the youngest candidate, only woman in that race, and I persevered. I just kept pushing. I thought, who could be a young, really out-of-the-woodworks candidate, like no one really knew other than maybe my local communities I was organizing within, and pull off getting 2,000 people with 22% of the vote? I thought that was pretty impressive, and so I just kept pushing from that point on and mobilizing more people, getting folks registered, pulling away people on the party positions. You know, I ran a bunch of slates with a lot of people to chip away at the Boys Club that was, you know, happening in my community in terms of elected office. And then I announced that I would primary the incumbent, and he saw his way out of the race in 2021, and that's how we got here.
Excellent. So a lot of our attendees are still in college, and so tell them a little bit about your college journey and how that prepared you for the life you're leading now.
Yeah, I, you know, I think what I tried to do most was take advantage of the opportunities of internships. I mean, we all love an internship that gives class credit because that's one less class with three credits, but really maximizing on what that internship opportunity is. You know, I didn't want to just stuff envelopes in an office. I tried to take advantage of seeing where I was lacking knowledge and where my interests were and trying to make myself a little bit more of an expert in that field. I interned at a lot of, at some law offices where I realized I did not want to go to law school, which was a great internship opportunity, completely eliminated that for me. And then I ended up working for, or interning with U.S. Senator Kirsten Gillibrand, where that is really where I felt the first inkling of, okay, local government is where I want to kind of like dig deeper. And through that, and I will say, and I always give this advice, like, I think the most awkward and embarrassing thing, young people, that I at least felt, and I think young people still feel, is when someone gives you a business card or when someone older than you says, yeah, let's get a coffee, or follow up with me, or email me, like, 10 times out of 10, we're just not doing that or not following up on it because it's like super awkward, like, why would you do that? They're old, we don't want to get coffee with them. But those are really the opportunities that I think can open up more doors, and I didn't take advantage of those enough until I think I was like in grad school, really trying to figure out what were the next steps. And so I think outside of that, and really being able to say like, what are you good at? Again, I never thought I was going to be an elected official, but I knew I was really great at strategy. I knew I was good at operations. I knew I was really, really good at aggregating data, looking at numbers, and coming up with field plans or communication plans for campaigns. And so I kind of, you know, got myself into that angle for a handful of years because I was getting people that looked like me, spoke my languages, cared about, shared my values, and cared about the communities that I cared about into office and helping those people get a little bit closer to chop away at the things that we think are actually like inequitable and not good for our, or not just for our communities, and trying to build out those relationships as much as possible with the coffees and the follow-ups and things like that.
Well, it sounds like your experience made you the ideal candidate because you had all the skills a candidate needs on their team to run. So we've got a question from Veronica Bonilla, one of our students, who will pose her question now. Thank you, Veronica.
Thank you, President Mason. Good afternoon. My name is Veronica Bonilla. I am a first-year student at John Jay and a part of the Adelante Latinx Leadership Program. First off, it's an honor to be here and a pleasure to speak to the council member. And my question is, what is the most significant source of motivation that has driven you to success?
I think the biggest thing that keeps me motivated and going, at least now as a council member and the Majority Leader, is seeing the direct investments that I'm able to negotiate that come back into my district. Like was mentioned in my bio, bringing in over $34 million in two years, those are actual, fully committed, concrete dollars that are going into creating new housing, updating infrastructure, you know, creating new parks, building a new school. There's like real things that are going to live beyond me, and I think that is really my goal as an elected member. I think more times than not, when we get elected leaders throughout the city and historically over time, because there are term limits, because there's limitations with time, people really are honed in on how can I show the voters that I'm electable? And there is more short-term planning than long-term planning. I know I'm electable, and so what I've been able to do is, or focus on, is here's my full eight years, and I am planning for eight years. You know, I'm looking at development, looking at capital investments, making asks of the mayor and the Speaker of City Council on projects and investments that are directly going to happen within eight years. I'm not limiting myself to two, but to four, and I think that's really helped me be able to fully fund projects and see them realized and have a lot down the pike. But I do think the thing that keeps me motivated is knowing that I have the skill set to make the hard asks that I think people are not used to asking. I have the vision. Like, a lot of times, people lack clear vision, and it's really just about implementation at this point, but I have all the other tools in my toolbox to make sure that if I get the yeses, I can see things through all the way to really shift what my community looks like. And, you know, I think most of us know, every decade that goes by, we either gain more for a future generation or we lose more for a future generation, and so I have eight years, I almost have a decade to be able to shift something, and so that's my priority.
I love the fact that you're looking at this as an eight-year period to achieve your goals and your vision. So there's a question in the chat about how do you push through adversity and lead with confidence? And we heard you say that you faced a loss with your first election. Using that as an example or others, how do you push through when things don't go your way and still have this confidence?
I think, I think one of the driving goals is when you have a bill, a budget priority, maybe a challenging situation in the community, you have to just face them head-on and you have to be real about it. Think more times than not, and I think it helped, it has helped me that I worked as like a caseworker in a council office. I've worked with all the agencies, I've done the budget. I really have come into this role with a full toolkit. I say this all the time, like, I knew where the bathrooms were, and I knew, you know, the budget people, and I knew, you know, operationally how to move a bill through the legislative process. I really came in fully equipped. But there's always going to be challenges, right? And there's always going to be things that you can't solve. There's plenty of people that come into my office, and whether they're, they had a fire in their building and they lost everything, they can't afford to pay rent and were just evicted, or something as, that's maybe not as serious, like, they have a ton of potholes on their streets and they're tired of their car getting damaged. There's an array of issues that happen that, to each individual, it's happening to them, and it is stressful to them, and it is urgent to them. And so I think what I try to do is, whether someone's mad at me about a pothole or mad at me because I can't find them housing fast enough, you really have to take it case by case and understand that as long as you are doing everything within your limits and what I can do within my jurisdiction as a New York City Council member, that is the max that I can do. And the goal is to solve as many problems as we can, but sometimes that's not the case, and you really have to understand that. I understand that I am limited sometimes in what I can and cannot do. Then on the other side of this, whether it's like budgetary challenge or legislative challenge, and you have maybe a labor union that's happy, but a private corporation that's upset, I always try to lead with like, as many people are unsatisfied means you're doing the right thing, right? If not one person can say she did this for me, then we have found compromise and it's something that we can move forward with. Because I think that's, you know, when you're looking at government, it's not just about solving one problem for the loud, small group of people, or whether it's a large group of people. At the end of the day, I represent 200,000 people and the rest of the city, and so you have to be able to find as much compromise as possible.
Excellent, and I love that you came into this role fully equipped to do it, as you say, with a full toolkit. So in four years, you have risen to being Majority Leader. What does that job entail? Explain to our community what it is you do as the leader.
Sure, so this is my third year in the Council, so in just two years, I got appointed to Majority Leader, and basically, it's kind of twofold. It really, a lot of these positions and roles can be what you make of it. The on-the-books items are, I'm the presiding officer over stated meetings, so we have two stated meetings every month except for the summer where we have one a month. I preside, I'm the presiding officer, so I run those entire meetings in conjunction with the Speaker of the City Council. I'm basically second-in-command in New York City Council Government. I also am the leader of our Majority Conference, which are the Democrats in New York City Council, and so I'm really able to take in as much feedback and priorities as possible from the body and shape our legislative agenda in conjunction with the Speaker. And most of the time, in conjunction with my whip, who is Councilmember Selvina Brooks-Powers, we are the twofold force that is setting the legislative priority by me. She ensures that our priorities get done by getting a majority of the votes and by members. But what I'm hoping, what I am doing more so of, other than the more operational sides of it, like presiding over a meeting and setting, like agenda-setting for the Council, it's, I'm really hoping to continue building with members to find more space for us to be collaborative and to coalition build. I think, as much as y'all probably don't want to hear this, as you move up in the workforce, you always end up with smaller groups of people connecting and it being clickish or it being, like, certain groups are louder, so they move more things, or maybe people feel isolated. So I'm trying to utilize my role to say, you know, I'm looking at people's agendas and I'm highlighting like, hi, you've introduced, you know, X amount of bills, but you've only passed one in one year. Why is that? Like, how can I help you move? Like, these bills are good for the city or they're good for your community? So I'm getting my hands probably a little more wet in that I'm getting into the nitty-gritty of it all, but I do think that there's, you know, time passes really quickly here. The budget takes up about four months of a council's life, and so in two-year sessions, which we've had now, first years and now these next two, if we're not comprehensively looking at legislative priorities and coming up with plans on how to move bill packages or putting bill packages together, you might lose some really good bills. So that's pretty much what I'm working on over the next two years.
Excellent, and my apologies, it's right, you've moved so quickly in two years, my couldn't comprehend it.
It's okay.
One of our students, Sarush Day, who is interning herself, she is taking your advice. Sarush Day has a question for you as well.
Thank you, President Mason and Majority Leader. It's an absolute honor. My name is Sarush Day McCran, and I am part of the ACE Program and the Honors Program, and my question is, John Jay recently launched a pilot program that provides emergency contraception at a low cost for students in discreet vending machine. And as co-chair of the Women's Caucus, you have ensured reproductive rights are protected throughout our city, you know, and esteemed, and you mentioned it through the Abortion Rights Act. Can you share with us how the City Council is continuing to work to protect women's reproductive rights?
Yeah, and right now, I would say the main thing that we're focused on is maintaining the $1 million commitment that we have to the contraceptive fund and to the Reproductive Rights Act Fund to ensure that people that need to come to New York City to receive an abortion or any sort of healthcare-related, reproductive healthcare-related issues have the ability to do so. Additionally, just in the same vein of what you mentioned that CUNY is doing with menstrual hygienic accessibility, we have a bunch of, we just passed a bunch of bills that expand the offerings in our shelters, schools, our jail facilities, and in other buildings that now provide menstrual cups along with pads and tampons. We also changed the language in all of New York City law now, instead of it saying feminine hygiene product, we've now just created menstrual products throughout our local government. Language really matters, as we all know. The one note I will say for CUNY is, we don't need discreet, we don't need to be discreet about menstrual pads and tampons and cups and items. Menstruating people are menstruating every month, so I might have to hit up CUNY and let them know we don't need any discretion, but we are working on budgetary items to make sure the pot stays there, and if it can, if we have wiggle room to expand it, to put more money towards it. We have really great groups like the Bridget Alliance, who are ensuring people have access to abortion care and to reproductive healthcare, both outside of New York City to come to New York City and in New York City, and we are avidly working with them to ensure we can keep that pot. And we are still looking at different ways for menstrual products or for menstruating people to expand on our, at least our legal, like our laws on where we can keep expanding to ensure that accessibility is there and affordability is there, right? We want as many of these products to be free. Sometimes people just can't afford to go buy something that's good and healthy for them to utilize.
Thank you for that. I will say that our menstrual products are visible across campus. The only thing we're keeping discreet is the contraceptive, the emergency contraceptive.
Yes, yes, yes.
But we've got the other things very, very visible. We've got another question, I'm just saying that so our students who are listening will know that you can find them. So we've got another question from Cindy Ramden.
Thank you so much, President Mason, and hello, Councilwoman Ferriess. It is such a pleasure to be here with you today. My name is Cindy Ramden. My name is Cindy Ramden. I'm a senior majoring in Humanities and Justice here at John Jay. And I'm also the Peer Outreach Coordinator for Student Academic Success Programs. And I'm also an Honors Program student. And, you know, looking to you, someone who was co-chair of the Women's Caucus and someone serving on the Commission for Gender Equity, you know, the work you've done regarding visibility for survivors of domestic violence, um, access to childcare and reproductive rights, it's been more than impactful. And currently as someone who aspires to conduct research through John Jay's Honors Program, you know, about the relationship between visibility for women and reproductive rights. My question is, and what I ask is, what advice would you give to those who want to expand on the work you've done for the women of New York City?
Yeah, this is a really great question. So thank you for asking it. I think a lot of times we in the midst of trying to change policy or create new, a new initiatives throughout a city, or on the other side of this, maybe like your research side or through the nonprofit side, it takes a lot for there to be alignment and for there to be dots connected. Um, and so I think what I would say is the research always helps, looking at the laws that were created, looking at when their reporting is supposed to happen, pulling those reports um, and giving feedback on how to expand on that or um, maybe amend a bill. You know, I'm, I'm always trying to look at aggregated data to make sure that we're doing something with the data. We're mandating our agencies to aggregate and report back to us. Um, but sometimes a lot of, since this work is done in silos, I think a lot of times you end up with tunnel vision and you think, okay, we got menstrual cups in, so I can check that box. Like, that's done. Um, or we put, you know, we've now done Unlock NYC, so survivors of domestic violence now have a tool and an avenue to ensure they can change their locks and get a new key and be protected in their home. And so we move on to the next thing because there are so many urgent things to try to address. But we do need that wraparound. We do need that connector to bring us back. Um, and sometimes I think in governance, because of bureaucracy and the way it works, or it doesn't work, uh, sometimes that it's slow to kind of do that wheel back around to check. And so any supports around there, I think are great. And, you know, I think giving feedback to members um, is really, really important, whether you do that through your institution or you do that individually. You know, I've, I've been trying to figure out what are the other avenues to advocate on behalf of women that are not just like, something you can see, something that's tangible, like every single day, like childcare, still important, or menstrual equity, still important. The thing I came around at the end of last year was traumatic brain injury. Um, I had looked into how TBI is impacting domestic violence survivors. And we don't actually have a connector in local government to say they're not, they're having employment issues. They aren't showing up to this, to the, their students, P, you know, PTA meetings or school meetings. They're maybe having forgetfulness and it's not necessarily because they're a bad parent or it's only stress or trauma of an abusive relationship. It might actually be concussions that, that is impacting their health, that is impacting every other aspect of their life. Um, and so I've been working with an organization to, I have a bill in the council on TBI right now. Um, and we've been trying to shape it. We like, you know, wrote a whole op-ed to shape it, to connect it to. We care about TBI when we're talking about football players during the Super Bowl, but why are we not talking about this every single day for survivors of domestic violence? And so I think it took a lot of effort and work for me to like, find this, this issue that is really happening. And there's a lot of investments medically, like in the healthcare space, on expanding on this, but there isn't, there wasn't anything happening legislatively. Uh, and so if you can find a space to do that and make sure that's amplified, I think that's, that's the best way to ensure that um, we're moving towards the, the progress that we want to see, but while, you know, while highlighting the things that we know are, are super important and are hap- happening in while, while everything else is happening too, it's like nothing is fallen off and left behind.
Thank you. We'd like to get some advice from you. As um, Chair of the Committee on Economic Development, I know that you um, see the relationship between CUNY and economic development and know that CUNY is one of the biggest drivers of economic development in, in the city of New York. And you mentioned that budget takes up a quarter of your year. Um, how can the college community here, the CUNY, the CUNY committee, community assist you in advocating for higher education funding?
I think the, the, the biggest thing that moves most people is hearing the personal testimony. More times than not, we can look at the numbers and know that the program that's there has metrics that are met, that has output that we're seeing in our communities. Um, but I think sometimes in bureaucracy, you lose the human connection of who's at the end of that number in the data set that, uh, that we're looking at to whether we invest more money um, or only restore money to a certain initiative and program. So I think definitely public testimony, um, the type of advocacy that students can make towards local governance is really important. I will also stress that the biggest part of the budget is the mayor's budget. So advocating not just to the council and your individual members or the individual members that have maybe a CUNY institution, but making sure we're like, letting the administration know where our priorities lie. Um, and, and sending over those, those public testimonies to ensure that, I mean, we all know, but I sometimes think it gets lost, that there are people at the end of these numbers. Um, and we are making a difference with a lot of the great initiatives uh, and, and funding pots and where they're going in our local communities. So um, I would, I would say that is probably the most impactful for most people that I work with.
Great. Thank you. And thank you for giving us an opportunity to show you the benefit of your investment in CUNY through our four students here. Veronica, you had a second question, I think that would be good for the Majority Leader to hear now.
Yes, thank you. So my second question is, considering your countless achievements, what are you most proud of?
Wow, you're gonna make me pick one? This is tough. Honestly, I, I will say I worked, I worked really hard on two, two of my bills, which was the ferry fare bill uh, and my industrial, industrial development action plan bill. Those two bills really gave me gray hair. They were really difficult to move through. Two, two things that I thought were going to be really like no brainers, both not sexy issues, you know, like we're, we're talking about discounted fares on a boat for students and we're talking about manufacturing zones. Like that is, it's not bringing the masses, you know, it's not like sexy stuff. Um, really thought they were going to be easy, but on the ferry fare bill, for example, I was mandating the New York City Economic Development Corporation to codify into law uh, that they had to have discounted fares for students. Now, what I learned in year one of taking over this committee and the pushback I received on this bill was that no one had mandated, outside of reporting to the EDC, no one had mandated them to do anything in over fifteen, twenty years. And so immediately on the, you know, other side of City Hall, they were like, no, we don't mandate them to do anything. We'll just make this a policy. And I'm like, well, I want a policy that lives beyond me and beyond this mayor. Like, we have a mayor that's into it. We have a council that's into it. But that doesn't mean that the next set of people will want to keep a discounted fare. And so without codification, it's not good enough for me. And so it took us several months. Like, when I mean several months, like six, seven, eight months to negotiate this bill to ensure that codification happens in the way that it happens at the discount rate that I wanted. And then in that, because when you give me time, I start thinking about other things, we also were able to loop in veterans, seniors and people with disabilities, codified their discounts into law as well. So, you know, they gave me probably too much time, but we were able to do a lot more um, through dialogue and through conversation on what we thought was best and where we thought we could protect the most people and have the most offerings for folks. And, and very similarly with my manufacturing bill, it was something that I thought was necessary because what I learned in my committee, my year, second year in, was we hadn't, we created uh, the approval to have manufacturing districts uh, in nineteen sixty-one, and then we never looked back at them. And so we hadn't reimagined, we haven't reassessed, we hadn't looked back at our manufacturing districts since nineteen sixty-one. That's older than my mom. Like, my mom was born in nineteen sixty-seven. And I thought, well, that's kind of insane to think that we are approving new businesses where um, rezoning some of these manufacturing zones. We're hearing from community that there are, uh, you know, Main Street is disappearing and then the manufacturing areas, we're losing businesses, we're losing huge industries and sectors. But then no one is going back and saying, why are we losing sectors in New York City in totality? And so again, something that I thought was gonna just be really simple. We haven't done this since nineteen sixty-one. Let's create every eight years, the city does a plan, like reassesses every single one, shows where the job opportunities are, where there's challenges, where businesses are uh, maybe dissipating, where maybe they need to grow and we need to look at reimagining what this certain space looks like or that district looks like, because maybe they need more space to provide more work, to have more workers. And it was something that was more of a challenge to pass uh, than I thought it would. And so I'm really proud of those two bills. I think they're really going to impact long-term New York City. You know, I, I'm not going to be able to take credit. It's not like the ferry fare is, is named after me or anything. People won't know that I did that. Um, but it's something that's gonna live forever as a discount unless an entire council repeals it, um, which I don't see us doing that in New York City. Um, and I think we'll be able to protect a lot of jobs in a lot of sectors in our industrial business zones and in our manufacturing districts, especially if we're reassessing every eight years, um, before decades have changed before like the, the, the census where we do redistricting and things like that. I think that's just gonna be really critical to those sectors surviving in New York City. So really proud of those two bills.
And, and I love that you picked something, as you said, that's not, you know, sexy and high interest, but is important to our communities. And you're demonstrating the importance of generational change to look at things with fresh eyes. So what advice do you give to the next generation of leaders that are watching this webinar? Specifically, or in, in particular, our female viewers?
I would say take up as much space as you can. Um, I think it's really easy to fall in the background or to feel like if you make your point, it's a redundant point because someone already said it in the room. Um, adding your voice to either affirm things or validate things that were said is super important. And uh, I, I do like to know, like mentorship is hard. Finding a mentor is really hard. Um, it's really like on someone to take you on, but that doesn't mean you can't build like a kitchen cabinet of advisors. And you should call on people that you view um, as someone you're trying to emulate who they are or their behavior or their, you know, aspiration. Uh, or really value the work that they've put into themselves and their careers. Ask them to advise you on things. Ask people questions. Build your own kitchen cabinet of, of advisors that can help you through uh, your, your career, whether that's your educational career, um, or whatever industry you end up investing your time, energy into. Um, I feel like a lot of pressure goes on finding a mentor. Um, and that can feel really isolating because it, it, it has to be an equal partnership on both sides for mentorship. That doesn't mean there aren't people out there that are experts, that are willing to like grab a coffee, pick up a phone and advise you on something if you need it. So build your kitchen cabinet of advisors.
Thank you for, for making sure they hear that, that they can own reaching out to people. They don't have to wait for somebody to find them and see them, that you can create your own opportunities. So, so thank you for that reminder to all of our students and, and everyone listening. So what's the best piece of advice that you got along the way that you're, that still impacts as you move through life now?
I, I mean, I, I would say that that's probably it. I, I had someone tell me really early that mentorship just has to come and that they, they, they really posed it to me like, well, who do you call? Who's your soundboard? What, who do you call when you need advice? And I started listing, you know, I was like, well, I call this person for this. And I have, when I have questions about transportation, I call this, these two people. And they were like, right, so you have mentorship in different fields in different ways, like people are advising you. And so it was really about getting the, like I said, the kitchen cabinet together of advisors to ensure that um, I can keep moving throughout this space. Uh, and then I, I'll say that like, it's, it's been really uh, important to like, keep adding people where you can. And like, me in this field, I will absolutely never know everything. Like, it is expected to me to be an expert in a lot of different spaces. Um, because as a city council member, I'm, you know, doing land use, I'm writing legislation on different topics. I'm managing a budget. So it's like an array of things that you have to kind of be an expert in, but it's really important to have the people that are in those spaces that maybe you are not deeply invested in like, learning a lot about. Um, because they can help advise you and keep you at least on the track that you want to be on and, and not fall off that track. So I think it's important to like, build that and keep pulling people in where you can.
And what's nice again is that you're not talking about one person serving all roles, that you're building a community um, to, to, of advisors. So thank you for that. So I've got a question in the chat that I don't want to leave unanswered. The question is that you've, uh, how do you balance your dedication to your current community with the influx of new um, immigrants to our communities? And how do you balance those, those needs?
Yeah, it's about building real community support. Um, and so what I've been able to do, fortunately, uh, in my district is, uh, when we started initially getting migrant shelters or asylum seeker shelters put in my district, I just pulled in every interfaith group, every nonprofit that I funded um, into, I'm like a mini task force that was really insular, super private. Um, I'm not really into having communities, um, protest shelters and things like that. I believe everyone deserves housing. Everyone deserves to live a life with dignity. It is our municipality's responsibility, our state's responsibility to do, to, to provide those protections as well. Um, and so I sat all of the actors in a room and I said, we are accepting these people. We are doing all that we can for these folks. Um, what can you bring to the table to ensure that they have a, a good and safe and like dignified transition? Um, here are the locations that they are coming. I'm funding you each at these amounts. What are we doing together? And really, that's been able to provide a really great foundation of support. Um, we pulled in uh, so many members from the community that were ready to buy things, donate things, help disperse items. And I think the more you, as an elected leader, the more I can say to people we believe in providing housing for everyone. And I say that with confidence and firmly with my feet grounded, the less likely I have had people say, well, I don't believe they don't, like, they don't, they, they don't deserve housing. I don't allow people that space to take up. Because I, I personally, for me, I just, it's just like not, it doesn't sit well with me. Uh, we all, we all transition, at some point, our families have transitioned into our communities. And we all weren't just rooted and, and, and grounded here from the inception of its existence. Uh, and so I personally believe like, and that's with issues across the board. You, you, you build a community team, you build the task force, you empower people to feel ownership of that thing. Uh, you know, I really put pressure on where I'm like, you are the person that can do this and I will support you to this. And I'll take whatever public hit, but we will do this together. I really do think that is how we've created a really supportive environment. And uh, you know, I think there's obviously benefits and challenges that, that come. Um, we, we generally in the city just have a really big challenge with the federal government moving really slow on funding, moving really slow on work authorizations. But I, I've been just working really diligently to pull in the right partners um, and to, to build um and to to build trust uh with the CBOs that are on the ground doing the work to make sure that when someone does get a work authorization, we call a union, we call a workforce center, we help move them through. Um and because we've created a really safe environment, the the resources and the the data is like easily accessible between all of us, so we can help people um safely uh build a foundation here in the city, or at least in my district in the Bronx.
Thank you, and we are unfortunately coming to the end of the hour. I've not been able to ask all, ask all of the questions in the Q and A, but want to give you an opportunity for some closing remarks.
Sure. Um well, I'll just say thank you all for having me. I really enjoyed getting to hear the questions and having um insightful dialogue here tonight. Uh I really, I guess I'll share a couple of few last words of advice before I leave. First, please stay in touch with me, I really mean what I say in that, you know, shoot me over an email, I read my emails, I zero out my inbox every evening. Um and stay in touch with not just me, but your other local electeds. Check out who represents you, check out what, you know, what problems you have in the community and keep them in the loop of it. Um look them up online, find their email list, go on their social media. Make sure you see what they're up to, see that they're doing the things that you want them to do and being good by your community. Really, all politics are local, so by staying in touch with what's happening in your local neighborhood, it's to me, I believe, one of the most beneficial ways uh to be of service to bettering our communities and our society. Um I will do a little plug, remember to vote in every election and uh local elections, please, please, please. I know, we can have, maybe you can bring me back to have a more, another conversation on our bipartisan system and what it means in New York, but please make sure you vote. Uh and I'll be corny and say, say, stay in school. Uh but yeah, I'll leave y'all with that.
Thank you so much for honoring us with your presence today for Women's History Month. Uh and and as you said earlier, that that your life, what you do, you didn't say it this way, but your life is creating history. Um the, being the first Latina woman, uh you may be the youngest uh to be Majority Leader um is is remarkable, and I love that our students get to see history being made in real time. So thank you for joining us, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to showcase your investment in CUNY through our students. Um as you can see, they are brilliant, uh wonderful representatives of what, what your investment in CUNY does for our community. And thank you for always, for talking about how we all have an opportunity to build community and make this city a better city. So uh for Women's History Month, again, we are honored to have you here in conversation with us today, and thank you.
Thank you so much, happy Women's History Month, y'all.